All right, it is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, September 22, 2015, and we will start with roll call.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Amy Seeboth-Wilson?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Barbara Stackhausen?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
We have some special presentations this evening. I would like Brian Allen, first of all, to give us an update on the status of the transition from the EMS service from the City of Platteville to Southwest Health.
Good evening. Just an update, the hospital does take over control of the ambulance service on Sunday morning at 6:00 a.m., so Platteville EMS will cease at that time, and then Southwest Health EMS will take over. There's one document that needs to be completed yet between the hospital and the city, and the train McGraw and the hospitals are training are working on that, so. But at this point, everything is set to go at 6:00 a.m. Sunday morning.
Thank you.
And I would just like to offer my thanks to all of the people who have participated in the ambulance service over the years, and I believe you've built an exemplary service, and I think this just is an excellent opportunity for that service to become even more useful and more dynamic for this area.
I would like to say on behalf of the Common Council, thank you to all the past EMTs and present EMTs for their dedication and time and talent, and look forward to the new relationship with Southwest Health.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo that from everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item, museum update. Diana Bolander, our new museum director.
Thank you. My name's Diana Bolander. I'm the museum director at the Rallo, at the Mining and Rallo-Jamison Museums, and I'm happy to be here. I haven't talked to the council for a couple of months now, since I started in June. I'd like to thank Karen for inviting me to come and talk about what we're working on, and I'd like to thank a bunch of my board members and volunteers are here to help support me in my first council presentation, so. I wanted to focus, first, I wanted to give you an update on the historic reenactment. Can you hear me okay?
It's on.
We had great record numbers at the reenactment this year. I'll let them arrange. On the school day on Friday, we had 2,201 attendees from the schools, and Saturday we did 825 people, and Sunday we had 357. So we were at 3,383, which is good. Last year we were at 2,324. So our numbers were quite high this year, thanks to the committee led by my coworker Stephanie. And the committee asked me to extend my thanks to you for your support, your generous support of the reenactment every year. We really appreciate it, and we couldn't do it without you, so, thank you. So, at the museum, my aim is to build on our strengths and address our challenges in a really straightforward manner. So, I really think the mine is amazing, and it is unique draw. It draws people to the museum. It really sets us above every other mining museum in the state and the region. We are the premier mining museum focusing on lead and zinc mining. At no other location can you go down into an 1840s lead mine and walk around and experience what it was like from the 1840s through the 1970s. We need to be proud and loud about that, and that's one of the things that I'm really aiming to do and hopefully have hit the ground running doing. We're really strong in that we have great dedicated board members and experienced and dedicated staff, and we have the support of the community and the city. Our main challenges right now are that we have a small and aging membership. We struggle with simplifying our message, and attracting members and volunteers is difficult. We also have two very large historic buildings, I'm sure you're familiar with them, that we're maintaining. You can see them here in the slide. And some of the public spaces are not ADA compliant, so. For the upcoming time, we are focusing on these things first. The first is branding and the website, and I'll give you an overview of the new logo in just a minute and go into more detail. Becoming more visitor-centered, this includes things like putting in wheelchair-accessible doors and being ADA-compliant. Also, just simple things like being welcoming and making sure that visitors are welcomed, not only by our great staff, but really welcomed by an exciting landscape when they come up and are embraced and engaged in the museum and our materials the entire time they're there. So, small changes will be putting things, sensors in the bathroom, so the lights go on automatically, instead of asking people to turn them on and off so that we can save energy. Little things like that to send a message that you're costing us a little money, but we want you to come. So, we're working on becoming more visitor-centered. We also are working towards doing an hours change. This was approved by both of the boards, and I'll talk more about this in a minute. Focusing on collections management, we're writing grants. You might have seen in my reports, we've written two grants so far to get past perfect museum software. This will allow us to really organize our information about the collection so that when we have staff turnover, we're still maintaining the integrity of the collection and all the data that's related to it. And that's a huge project involving photographing all of our objects, over 20,000 objects, and putting all that into the database. So, that's a huge project that'll be going on in the next couple of years. And then, we'd like to engage in strategic planning, and we're planning to start that this fall, get everyone on the same page. We've got the JMA, the Jamison Museum Association Board, the museum board, which is the city board, city council, staff, volunteers. A lot of people involved there are very passionate, and we want to make sure we're all working, going in the same direction, working towards the same goals. And that'll help us in the future when we do things like capital campaigns, membership drives, et cetera. It's very essential also for grant writings, for larger grants, so. I'm really excited to do that. Not everybody gets excited about strategic planning, but I do. One of the first things that's been approved by both the Jamison Museum Association Board and the museum board is that we are changing the museum hours in 2016. Currently, we're open May through October, nine through five, seven days a week. And then, in the off-season, in the winter months, November through April, we're open nine to four, Monday through Friday, but we are closed on the weekends. We want to be more accessible to the community, and we want to add value to our memberships, so we really want to be open on the weekends year-round. So, the proposal that was approved by the boards was to be open 10 to 5 during our high season, May through October, seven days a week. And then, that will allow us to save money so that we can apply that money to be open 11 to 4, Saturday and Sunday, in off-season. And I did a lot of math related to this. The big question was, how can we do this without making a huge dent in our LTE budget? And we looked at different scenarios such as closing on Mondays year-round, which wasn't viable because we get so many people in during the summer. But we don't get that many people in between eight and nine, and we'll, we can tell them to go get a coffee at Badger Brothers and come back, or we can tell them to go through the Rallo-Jamison Museum, because the staff will probably still be there at that time. But this will allow us to apply. You'll see we'll save $2,544, and it'll cost us $1,800 to add one guide on the weekends that we are closed now. So, that'll be great. And that'll open up the exhibit areas in the Rallo-Jamison Museum and the Mining Museum. We'd like to eventually, as long as, this is an experiment. It's all, we can change it if it doesn't work. And we'd like to see what the demand is. So, the plan is to open the exhibit area in the next year, see what the demand is, and then, if it's worth it to add another guide, we can also do mine tours year-round. But that will cost more in terms of, you know, clearing snow and things like that, so. This is an experiment. We're trying it out. We're going to see how it goes. We're really excited. There's also, the Jamison Museum Association is interested in possibly recruiting volunteers so that we can offer mine tours year-round this year, but we're still in the works of figuring out how that volunteer program would go. And we're going to do a special programming on the weekend for families to draw people in. So, you'll see, we'll do family days and activities and special tours and things like that coming up this year. So, look for that. It'll be in your packets, I'm sure. The next thing is the branding project that we've been working on. The museum has had a lot of variety of logos and images over the years. The center image of the blue circle and the Mining Museum and Rallo-Jamison Museum is what's used on our, currently used, well, was used, on our letterhead, but it wasn't used consistently on marketing materials. It wasn't on the brochure. It wasn't on the webs, it was on the website, but it wasn't consistent, obviously. The image that's used most often is probably the image of the train in the upper right-hand corner. It's still on our brochure in 2015, and it's a photo from the late 1970s. It's a great photo featuring the children of someone in the audience, but it might be mentioned that those children, I think, are my age, so. It's a great photo, but it's time to update it and let people know that the experience that they're going to have at the museum is just as good as it was in the 1970s, but has been refreshed a bit. The boards have both voted on and approved the new logo. Here it is. Yay. The goals for the logo are to unify our marketing message, to really cement putting the mining and Rallo-Jamison museums together under one pickaxe or umbrella, as you will, and it also incorporates a connection to the City of Platteville's logo. It's, we were going for a sleek and simple design that will easily incorporate into advertising, wayfinding, exhibit design, everything from something that's half an inch to five feet wide. And we also want to make it clear to visitors that they're coming to one place, that they're going to have multiple experiences. So, that'll be stressed in our materials as they're developed. Here's a comparison of the new logo to the City of Platteville's logo. We want to make sure that people understand that we're part of the city, and that's where the majority of our funding comes from, and we're really proud to be part of this vibrant city. So, we have some next steps with the branding project. We've got to develop graphic standards. If you go to our website, you will see that it has changed. So, it's exciting. It's new. It's fresh. It's clean. It'll show up great on your devices, on your phones, in your iPads and things like that. And this will incorporate great into our advertising. We're going to update our marketing materials as we go. Since we're changing the hours, we're going to have to update the brochure anyway and do things like that, so. But the next step is to create a marketing plan. I'm hoping that that will come out as one of our priorities when we do strategic planning. There's also some changes that are on the table for our membership program. The membership program is a program of the Jamison Museum Association, and it's one that they run. So, we put together a committee of museum board members, Jamison Museum Association Board members, and myself, and we've met a couple times over the last month to put together recommendations on how to change the program. And the changes are not only to increase revenue, but also to engage more people because our membership numbers are a bit low, or lower than where we want them to be. And the fees haven't changed since 1992. Right now, an individual membership is $10, and that's also what it costs for an adult to be admitted into a tour of the museum. So, there's a bit of a disconnect between the cost-value of a tour and the cost-value of a membership, given that when you have a membership, you can do unlimited tours for the year. We see this as a point of new beginnings for the museum, and we want to align our membership with program with those around the state that are like us. So, I included in your packet information about this so you could possibly read it. I'm sure you won't be able to read it on the slide here, but these are the suggested changes to the program, which have to go to the Jamison Museum Association Annual Meeting, which is on November 5, and that's where it will be voted on, and it'll be decided if this will go into effect or not. But it does have the support of the membership committee, the Jamison Museum Association, and the museum board, so we're very excited about. So, hopefully, knock on wood, those will be approved. We'll figure out exactly how we're going to allocate all the funds, and then, we'll do a membership drive next year. The board is currently working on how do we connect the membership to specific programs and projects? How do we take people from being members to being donors? How do we make sure we have meaningful experiences for members, not only as programs, but through volunteering? And how do we really attract people, take the museum to them, and bring them to the museum? So, these are all things that we're working on right now. So, hours change, focus on collections, collections management, strategic planning, and membership. Those are our big things that we're working on right now. Unless you have any questions for me, oh, I do have. If you'd like to get in before the membership changes, I brought some membership brochures, so if, in case, I'm sure you're all already Jamison Museum Association members, but just in case, I brought some brochures if you'd like to sign up, and I also brought our membership newsletter that's just going out this week.
Thank you. Any questions for Diana?
Thank you.
We do have a couple of people who have registered relative to the museum. One is Register in Favor, Tracy Roberts, and one who was asked to speak in favor, Hap Doss.
I'm Hap Doss, live at 135 Preston Drive, right here in Platteville, and have for quite a while. I feel very proud that we have the museum that we have here because it's certainly, most certainly, a draw for people, not only for the museum, but also for the historic encampment. And I remember as, when we came to town, Barb was off and running and working, and I had to find something to do, and so I volunteered the museum, and did that for a while, and then ended up working there. So, it was economic development, too. It's a good thing to have.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone?
Well, I want to comment that I lived across the street from the museum, and when my son, we had nothing to do, it sounds odd, but almost every weekend of every, for three years, we rode the train. Once we did the touring and toured the mine, he didn't like the mine when he was little, but he loved that train. So, we spent a lot of time on that train. So, I highly encourage you to either become a member, or come volunteer, or make tours on a regular basis. My grandchildren love that, the Rallo-Jamison Museum more, only because they can see the gadgets. And I just really feel, if you haven't been there recently, you need to go. We always talk about the lyceum talks. I also encourage that. But as a Corral member, Platteville Corral member, I just want to remind you that in the December, the Corral sings around the Christmas tree, which is also during the time that the trains are set up, which I think is December 13th, thank you, which is wonderful. If you haven't heard us sing around the Christmas tree, it's absolutely gorgeous. So, thank you for making the presentation.
All right. Next item is Fourth Street update. Howard?
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come speak here tonight about our Fourth Street construction. We're most of the way through at this point. Little bit of history, it was identified as Capital Improvement Plan Project for 2015. Project limits Main Street to Camp Street. The project replaces all underground infrastructure, water, including the service lines to the right-of-way, which is basically the backside of the sidewalk, sanitary sewer, also including the service lines to the backside of the sidewalk, storm sewer. We're installing conduit for future fiber-optic cables if necessary, replacing street surface, curb gutter and sidewalk, and landscaping as required. The contract itself, we had the bid opening on March 3, awarded to Madrell on March 24. Work began on April 9. Under the contract, Phase 1, Main to Furnace was supposed to be complete by June 10, Camp to Madison by August 28, and all remaining work by November 6. Main to Furnace was substantially complete by June 10. Camp to Madison was substantially complete by August 28. What I mean by that is that it was usable, open and usable to traffic. As you probably know, we had some issues with sidewalk and getting the final landscaping done, but all that is now done. Remaining work on track, is on track for completion. Right now, I'm predicting late October. Brought a few photos. Here's the curb machine with our folks from Bard with the concrete over here by, behind City Hall. Here's paving from Main Street up to Mineral. Here's paving up north side, up close to Camp Street. That's the high school, field, it's the field, or middle school, field, right there to the right side of the truck. This is one of the sidewalks, or this is the sidewalk up at Madison Street. It's hard to see, but there's a little dot in there. What that is, is that's a monument. It's a marker. It's a round disc about yay big around. Dr. Christina Fields of our Community Safe Routes Committee worked with the middle school, talked to them about sidewalks and things like that, and they were encouraging us to complete the sidewalk on that side of the street. We didn't have one before, if you recall. And one of the other things that the schoolchildren thought of was, can we mark out the distances on the sidewalk? So, what we did for a couple hundred dollars, we got enough markers that we were able to put them in from zero, which is this point up here at Madison Street, to 1,000 feet out just beyond where the middle school is. So, if you go out there and you walk that, you'll see those little markers, and that's what they're for. It's the distance along the sidewalk. The upcoming work this week, as of today, they've actually finished the storm sewer work. They have completed the landscaping up Madison to Camp. If they haven't done it this afternoon, they will start tomorrow with street excavation and graveling from Adams up to Madison Street. Next week, they'll complete the street excavation graveling, and I've been told that late next week, our concrete contractor will come in to start working on the curb and gutter. If that happens, then we should be able to pave in mid to late October. So, we're running ahead of our planned schedule, and just a reminder, we did put an incentive clause in there, $1,000 a day for them up to $21,000 if they finish ahead of the November planned timeframe. Any questions?
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, consideration, the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion invoked due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion in action. A is council minutes from the September 8, 2015 regular meeting. B is payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions. I have no appointments this evening, but we are looking for volunteers for Historic Preservation Commission, Commission on Aging, and also the Extraterritorial Zoning Board of Appeals. If you have interest in serving on any board or commission, please go to our website, platteville.org, and you will find the application forms available there. Next is licenses, a request to extend license premises on October 10, 2015 for 110 East Mineral Street, which is the VFW. One-year or two-year operator licenses to sell or serve alcohol are in the packet, and the last item is a permit for UWP torch relay run on October 10, 2015. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seeboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is citizen comments, observations, and petitions. We have two people who have asked to speak this evening, and I would ask again that you speak for five minutes or less. First person is Arlene Sis.
Good evening. Arlene Sis, 130 North Hickory Street. This is the evening where we're talking about special places here in Platteville. Diane and I, and actually, a member from the university, in the, we are trying to bring some things together so all of us work together for the various parts of the history of this area, because it is so important. You know, what we have here is very unique, and so, we're excited about this, and we've been talking about different things that we could be working together to actually make it stronger for our city to reach out and for people to want to come here and see what, all the history that we have here, because it is awesome. I'm not from here, as most of you know, and so, I really appreciate all the history that is going on here in such a small area, and with the historic homes and different things that we have. So, we are doing that, and so, we've already started to talk to one another, and we haven't done, I mean, we haven't made any things that we're going to do, but that is our goal, is so that maybe by next year, you'll see the three of us, the three groups working together. So, I think this is really positive. The other thing is I want to thank everybody who came to the Stone Cottage over the summer. We had a couple light, we had one of our four that was quieter than a rest, but for overall, it was pretty well. And on this past Sunday, we had a fantastic day. You couldn't have been in a better place because it was just fantastic. So, it was very, very good. So, I thank everybody who has made it to the Stone Cottage over the summer. We are doing something different this year. We are going to be open all next month, also on Saturdays and Sundays, because we believe that, because of all the people who come to this part of the state, who looks at our trees and how beautiful and all these things, we think they should maybe, they might want to take a stop at the Stone Cottage because of its history of being built for a veteran of the American Revolutionary War. So, that's kind of what we're up to right now. So, I think things are very exciting for what's going to happen in, here in this wonderful city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Gotchak?
I'm not going to ask you for money, and I'm not going to ask you to make any decisions. I am part of a local organization. I'm supposed to call us a local civic organization, and I'm going to emphasize "local." This is to make you aware of some things that are going to be going on this coming month, in particular, here in Platteville. The group that I'm going to be talking about is called the Platteville Move to Amend, and they will be going door-to-door during the month of October, excuse me, to circulate petitions. And the petition is asking that a referendum question be placed on the April 2016 ballot here in the City of Platteville. We have consulted with Jan, so she's aware of what's going on, and Chief, I think somebody came in and talked to you about the fact that we're going to be wandering the streets. Okay. The question that we would like to put on the ballot is, starts with, shall the City of Platteville adopt the following resolution? And I don't, do you want me to say the resolution? It's kind of long. Okay. But I've also got free and inexpensive material for you. This is the way it reads. "We, the people of the City of Platteville, Wisconsin, stand with the Move to Amend campaign and communities across the country to support passage of an amendment to the U.S. Constitution, stating, one, only human beings, not corporations, unions, nonprofits, or similar associations." stating, one, only human beings, not corporations, unions, nonprofits, or similar associations, are endowed with constitutional rights. Two, money is not speech, and therefore regulating political contributions and spending is not equivalent to limiting political speech." The objective ultimately is to get a constitutional amendment that will overturn the Citizens United decision by the court. It is a national movement. We are part of it, and there are cities throughout Wisconsin and the whole nation that are going through this process. And we consider the process here in Platteville to be educational. We could have brought this to you as a council, and you could have, we could have asked you to pass it, which you could have done or not done, and it would be put on the ballot as a referendum question. But the people who are working with the Move to Amend are very interested in education. And so the idea was that instead of that, we will go door to door and ask for people to sign this petition, and in so doing, we will educate them in terms of what this means. So that is, I'm here to alert you that we will be wandering the streets of Platteville during the month of October, and I thought if anybody should call you, any of you, and say, what is going on with these people, that at least I've tried to make you aware of what's going on. Does anybody have any questions? By the way, this is considered nonpartisan, and I think there are something like 60 communities already in the state of Wisconsin who have put this on the ballot. And when it goes on the ballot, we're finding that it's overwhelmingly agreed upon. So I think we're hopefully going to try to make some changes in terms of the power that money is exerting on our political decisions.
Have any particular hours you're going to be hemisizing the city?
My sense is that we're going to do like the telemarketers do, and hit you at supper time when you're home.
Or late night.
I don't even answer the phone when, so you could just not answer the doorbell. This is a group of volunteers, and they're simply doing this at times that are convenient for them.
Are these local people?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, there's nothing, okay, I think maybe one of our people is from Lancaster. Is that a no-no?
No.
No, they are local. And I think the same question is being raised in, Darlington is going to do it, or has done it already. So they have their petitions ready to turn in. Lancaster will be doing it, so the smaller towns around are organizing to do this.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Free and inexpensive. You can throw it away if you want to, but this is, I think, very well put in terms of information about the Move to Amend. And it's headed, Platteville Move to Amend, so it's us. You have met the enemy, and it is us. I have some information for you, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome. When somebody appears at your door, be nice if you sign the petition. All right. Thank you. I would like to just make one comment also during this time. Probably most of the council members are aware that a volunteer fireman for the Platteville Fire Department passed away last week. His name is Brian Hubbard. He was 34, and he died of natural causes, and I would just like to offer the city's condolences to his family and to his friends. Next item is reports that are in your packet. Plan Commission, Dan and Nichols?
Nothing to add.
I have nothing to add. Water and Sewer, Killian, Noll, and Stockhausen?
No addition.
None.
Air Park Commission, Doss?
Nothing to add.
First action item this evening is the shared ride taxi hours and service level. We're going to start with staff presentation, and we do have one person who's asked to speak on the subject.
Sure. Okay, from 2010 until recently, there have been two taxi services in the city, one supported with subsidies and the other on its own. Recently, the Platteville Cab Service, owned and operated by Mrs. Forbes, has gone out of business, and those customers are now using our Platteville Public Transportation Taxi. As a result, ridership and wait times have increased significantly. We're working with them to analyze the depth of the problem. And then we had basically two recommendations or two possible options. One is to do nothing, basically manage the hours as best you can, which may result in longer wait times. The other would be to increase budget hours. The problem is that federal and state contracts are established. A small increase would be allowable under the DOT rules, but would not increase the federal or state grants. So any increase in hours would need to be fully subsidized by city tax dollars. And statistics show that full subsidy to be approximately $20 per hour. Our contractor believes that approximately 250 hours more for the rest of 2015 would be helpful in reducing wait times, which is the equivalent of approximately $5,000. There is no slack in that taxi budget. There's possibility that at the end of the year, we could find that other areas may be under budget to compensate, but we won't know that until the year end. I did a little bit of work on this. We looked at the first few days in September, and it happens to be that September 4th had a record 172 riders on 145 trips, the highest trip count recorded in a single day. The previous record was 125. Just so that, for the people out there, their software does not accurately reflect when the calls come in, so it's hard for us to determine, using their software, the time from when the call actually came in until the driver reaches the customer. I was, I thought that they had that, but they have new software, and it doesn't do that. But what I do have are spreadsheets comparing July and August 2014 versus 2015. And then I had to compare Sundays. From July to July, there, July 2014 versus 2015, there's 4.6 increase in riders, and some of that is due to the increased hours on Sunday. If you recall, we went, in 2014, the Sunday hours were 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and in this year, we went, we extended that, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Forty-three percent increase on Sunday, based on the increase in the times. If you look at August 2014 versus August 2015, there's over 15 and 1/2 percent increase year over year, and Sunday, it's 130 percent increase. We believe that a significant portion of that August increase is due to the Platteville Cab Service customers going to the, our shared ride taxi. We have some concerns. They serve 24 dialysis patients each week, total of 48 trips. The appointments are scheduled to arrive on time as best they can, and, but you can't schedule the return trip, because each person takes a different amount of time to go through the procedure. When they're done, the patients are weak, and they're hungry, and all that stuff. The problem is that a lot of times, that time when they're getting ready to go home happens to be busy times during the day, and they end up having wait times typically in excess of 30 minutes with occasional waits of over an hour. Our contract calls for 11,500 driver hours per year. If we fully funded three drivers through the whole time that the taxi is in operation, it would be in excess of 18,000 driver hours. So running needs to manage the driver hours, you know, to put more on during the busy times and less on during the less busy times. So they could have as few as one or as many as three drivers per shift. Based on the work that we've done here showing the tremendous increase between the July and the August, we're recommending authorizing up to an additional 250 hours or approximately $5,000 to increase driver hours. Initially, we're recommending the funding come from the general fund balance until we have a final accounting of taxi revenues, and we can compare that. What we're saying is it would be a maximum of $5,000 over the budget. If revenues come in higher than we expect, that number would be reduced. You know, if there are other areas that come in under budget, we could balance the budget out that way. In 2016, we'll be proposing an increase in driver hours that's acceptable to the DOT, and discuss and incorporate that into the 2016 budget. Just so that you understand, 250 hours is a little bit more than 20 driver hours per week. So that's what we have, and that's what we're proposing at this point. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the dialysis patients. That's obviously the area I hear about the most, primarily from the drivers. But can there be a system where there's one taxi that's just assigned to those folks? Is that something that can be looked into, or is that not convenient?
The issue is that you can't always tell when those people are going to be done with their dialysis. There are people that are asking for the taxi to go to work, you know, people that are asking for the taxi to get children to school. There are lots of things, and, you know, it's hard for them to be able to say, well, I'm sorry, but we've got this one taxi that we're not going to use to take you to work, because we're waiting just in case somebody comes off of dialysis. It's kind of hard to justify that, I'm thinking.
Thank you. I agree. That's where my complaints I hear about.
Any other questions for Howard?
I just have a question. Our public transportation system includes both the shared ride taxi and the bus service, correct?
Yes, it does.
And was there any effort made to analyze the entire system to see if there was perhaps money within the entire system to fund these additional 250 hours?
We don't have significant, we don't have significant fare revenues for the bus system. So the major source of revenue is the university's payment that's fixed for this year. And so the bus system is on a fixed route with fixed hours, and there's a fixed amount of income coming in, so there's very little additional revenues that we can work on. But it is part of, it is a combined budget, and it will be looked at in its entirety at the end of the year.
What about some of the subsidies that we get from the state for this program?
That's all included in the budget, and those budgets are set. You know, we have a contract with the state for both the state and the federal dollars, and those cannot be increased once the contracts are signed.
Thank you.
We do have one person who's asked to speak, Rich Christensen.
Good evening. I'm Rich Christensen. I live at 10 South Third Street in Platteville. Right now, I think there is a simple question in front of the Platteville Common Council. Is the common council going to waste $5,000, or is it going to try to improve Platteville's taxi service? If the taxi service is being efficiently managed, the question is not whether the city should or should not add 250 hours and spend $5,000 doing so. If the taxi service is being efficiently managed, the question would be whether the city should or should not purchase a fourth taxi. I don't think the taxi service is being efficiently managed. I don't think it is producing the desired result with a minimum of effort, expense, or waste. It is unacceptable that the Director of Public Works would first present information when an item is up for action. It did not present the information earlier, when the item was on the meeting agenda for information and discussion. It is unacceptable that the Director of Public Works would again present information to the Common Council that is not accurate and is intentionally misleading. I don't think I need to waste the Common Council's time talking about the bad data presented by the Director of Public Works. I think it is obvious. I will simply ask, has any solid numerical data relating to long wait times been presented? Good data is required to solve problems and to make improvements. Relating to long wait times, data about when and how many times it is happening, along with other data, is needed in order to get to why it is happening and how it can be fixed. Get good data, and I believe not only could long wait times be reduced or even eliminated, but the taxi service could be improved in other ways, and money could be saved. I think the data is available, and I think it should be provided. There is really nothing very complicated about improving the taxi service. It is simple supply and demand. It's about efficiently matching the supply to the demand. It's about hours of the day, days of the week, and months of the year. It's about rides per hour. It's really not about riders or trips. I'm quite certain that there is more than enough supply hours to meet the demand rides for Platteville's shared ride taxi service. I've done the simple calculations using the good data I could find and not using the bad data presented by the Director of Public Works. As I said, I don't think the taxi service is being efficiently managed, and I'm inclined to believe that it is the city, more than the taxi service provider, that is responsible for this management. I hope the Common Council will not do what is easiest for them and throw $5,000 at the problem. I hope the Common Council will demand good data and the information it needs in order to make an informed decision. This isn't the first time that the Director of Public Works has presented to the Common Council information that is not accurate and is intentionally misleading. I want to remind the Common Council of just one thing. In January, when decisions were being made relating to taxi and bus service, he budgeted 20,000 rides by Platteville residents, not university students, that would generate $20,000 over 12 months. The new bus service started in May, and the Common Council can't see the numbers. To verify those numbers, the Common Council should ask, how many $25 monthly bus passes have been sold, and how many $1 bus fares have been collected? I will repeat what I said in January. How many times must empty buses drive? How many times must empty buses drive by before somebody asks questions? The Platteville Transit System Committee last met in March and plans to meet next in December. What good is that? What use are they? In order to not waste a ton of money in two thousand sixteen, more than two hundred thousand dollars, the Common Council needs to deal with the question of bus service sooner rather than later. I suggest the Common Council put the bus service question on the agendas of their two meetings in, in November. Data from May through October and previous to that will be available. If the Common Council waits until December, there will be those that use the excuse that it is too late to make changes. One last additional thing not related to taxi and bus service. In July, I asked the Common Council two questions, not expecting answers. At the first meeting in August, I was pleasantly surprised when Ken Killian asked that those two questions be answered. But that didn't happen then and it didn't happen later. Oh, well, just a couple of things the Common Council didn't want the public to hear. Do you have any questions or would you like me to re- repeat anything before I sit down?
Thank you, Rich. All right, back to the shared ride taxi hours and service level, council discussion.
Well, I, I really need to, um, talk about, I've been riding that taxi for three months and I think they do an excellent job. I will admit the one no-show was me because I made what I call a stupid mistake to go back and answer the phone instead of waiting for the taxi, so I took the next taxi that came to my building. Unless you ride that taxi, you don't realize how wonderful those people are and the phone, how often they ask all the drivers who can pick up the next nearest person that needs a pickup. So, they're working constantly, looking to double up, to find the most efficient ways to run that taxi service. As for the bus service, I think it is being used. I was just talking to our chief at the police department picnic, which apparently not everyone could attend, but the bus that stops at Roundtree Hall is full, completely full of students that ride that bus on a consistent level. So, I think in defense of the committee that met and in defense of the people who ride, um, in other words, I really want to see this money be approved because it is a wonderful thing for our community to continue these services. Yes, our budget is coming up and yes, we can look at different funding, but unless you've ridden on those, um, both the taxi and the bus, um, I defend these companies very clearly and the drivers and how hard they try to be efficient with what they have available. So, that's it.
Other comments?
Howard, what about, um, the hours, um, giving us what the breakdowns are? Uh, we used to get a report every month of who rode it, when they ride, yeah, I, we just skip that now or? We used to have what times were busy with the taxi from their other service, not the new guy, but the older services. We were told if they were handicapped, if they were, um, students, um, when they were, when they were picked up, which timeframes were busier than others?
My recollection, Mike, is that when we decided to extend the, the taxi hours later on the weekend, perhaps, Thursday, Friday to Saturday, we did get a report on-
On those hours.
The time that they were riding and yes, other information. But we didn't get, my recollection is not that we got a report on a daily or weekly basis, the rest of the hours. We were trying to establish the need.
In the past, we did.
Okay.
We got a monthly.
Okay.
Correct, Howard?
I don't recall that. I, I would, I think what we could do is, um, maybe tomorrow sometime, maybe you and I could discuss this and I can show you the reports that I have from previous years and, and we can, um, jog my memory a little bit on what you might remember.
Because we, we use that to verify how functional our taxi service was and we also said that, that we wanted that so we could compare the bus ridership and we got that for a while. I didn't see the one for the last month, maybe I overlooked it. But the first month in May, we had four people from the city ride the bus for the whole month and there were some college kids and I believe, jog my memory, for June, it was like eighteen people from Platteville rode the bus for the whole month. So, we were getting those and also I didn't see that for, uh, August.
Okay. I, I believe that I did submit that for August, but I'll, I'll go back and review that and make sure that you get those numbers for August.
Thank you.
I do have a question and that is, uh, Howard, you indicated that the taxi service running can, has software that can't provide us with the data relative to when a call is received and when a pickup is made.
Correct.
Is that specific, was that specified in our contract that that be, that that information be available?
No, it was not.
Okay. Then I suggest as we look to contracts in the future, that we include that kind of information so that we can make these, um, analyses. If, if that information is not really available, then, um, I, it's certainly obvious that the ridership has increased, so I don't have issues with the numbers of riders. It is hard to tell from the data provided that in fact, wait times have increased. So, um, I guess that we have to, uh, consider the anecdotal information that's being made available by riders that say that. But, but I think, uh, not having the data available because it, it's not tracked, uh, is, is something that we should address in future contracts.
Other comments? Again, the request is to either increase the budget by five thousand dollars to continue through the end of the year, will give us two hundred and fifty additional hours of service, or I guess anything other than that.
I move to increase the budget by five thousand.
Take a motion and a second. Does there any further discussion? We'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Without adequate information, I say no.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Nall?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is the EMS trust account disposition. We did receive this information last time, so this is a follow-up for action. Brian, do you have anything additional you want to add?
I do not have anything further from last time.
Any questions for Brian?
My question is, um, the binding account. Can that money be designated to the first year's payment, twenty sixteen, which is one hundred thousand dollars?
The pay-
The subsidy for the first year is a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I'm gonna add to that. I, I read Brian's memo and Brian explained that you can interpret this either way. The way I keep interpreting it when I read it is that the binding account has to pay for EMS service in Platteville and so I don't see why it couldn't be used to pay toward our contract to Southwest Health that's providing EMS service to Platteville.
All right.
Ask Brian?
I think ultimately, this is going to be a, uh, a policy decision, a, uh, a decision that the council makes as to what they want to do with this money. The, I think you can look at it to, there's at least two ways to look at this. You could look at the, the gift that was given, the purpose that was articulated, make your best interpretation of what those words meant. I've tried to provide you in a memo, a, what I believe to be a reasonable interpretation and say, in order to keep with that sort of spirit that was intended at the time of the gift, we're going to give this money to a successor organization such as Southwest Health Organization that's going to provide these EMS services and direct them to use that money for the same purpose that it was given to the city.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't, wouldn't that qualify what we're, what Ken asked as well? You're paying the contract with that money, you are giving it to Southwest Health-
If you'll let me go on, I'll, I'll try to get to what I see as another reasonable interpretation, which may be more in keeping with what you wanna do.
Okay.
Um, the second interpretation that I, that I could come to would be, this money was donated to the city for purposes of EMS. The EMS service, I mean, so the gift's made, the gift's done and it's, it's completed. Now, if the, if the EMS service is no, no longer going to be around and if this gift was made to say a, a charitable organization that itself was going to go out of business, then that charitable organization in order to, in, in keeping with federal law, would be required to donate that money or give that money to a similarly classified charitable organization. So, by analogy, the EMS, you know, given to the city for EMS purposes, the EMS service is quote, "going out of business," that money could then go to the city to be used for any general purpose that the city would have. It's the city being a tax-exempt organization, it would be a proper recipient for that money. And expenditure for providing, you know, services to EMS services would be a legitimate legal expenditure of that money.
Can I reframe my question? What I was trying to say is, we can give the check to Southwest Health, but say it's a, a prepayment toward a hundred thousand dollars, right? Like, if we give it to them, can we attach that clause that it is to be used to pay toward our contractual obligation?
Of course. I mean, you could, you, you, you wouldn't donate it to them at that point. You'd simply, when it came time for the city to make its payment, it would make the payment
Okay.
With that money.
Or even-
As opposed to not doing something else with it.
Yep. Okay. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah, and I, I think I understood what you were trying to say.
Okay.
This is what I'd like to do.
Is that a policy change we would have to make though? Because the hundred thousand comes out of the general fund, right? The one we would send on a regular basis?
The city's share of the hundred thousand is not the full hundred thousand.
What is the first payment? Can you refresh your memory, Brian?
The first payment is a hundred thousand, but the city's share is gonna be seventy-seven point some percent of it.
Thank you.
Well, we would lower that by-
Twenty-eight? Because, because we pay a portion of the one hundred thousand, not the full.
We pay the seventy-seven.
But we would have to make a motion to move that money from a trust account into the general fund and then change the general fund to the, the budget to send it on.
Would we have to close the trust account or can we just keep it in the trust account until we're ready to make that payment?
Well, you simply wouldn't do anything with it right now.
We'd let it sit.
I mean, the staff made some recommendations about what to do with other funds that are in existence and, uh, you would, I guess, let it sit there until, uh, the next budget session, when you pass a budget and then that's gonna be, come in as a source of revenue.
What now? Oh, he's not here.
I, um-
Other comments?
As a person who works with donors and I did not, this isn't going through the community foundations, I don't feel that this is a conflict of interest, but as a person who works with donors and potential donors, uh, of their own monies, uh, one of the criticisms or one of the questions I get most, asked most often, and one of the things that I try to provide assurance about is, uh, the people who are giving this money worked very hard to earn this money. And when they make these types of gifts, most frequently, they talk about them doing extraordinary things, not ordinary things. So, from a philosophical and personal basis, I truly, uh, I cannot support using binding trust money for operational expense. I could support transferring the binding trust money to the Southwest Health Foundation to be used for exemplary and extraordinary activities because I believe that when donors give these monies, that that's why they're giving them to you. They're not giving them to pay the lights, they're not giving them to pay operational ordinary expenses. Most donors that I work with talk about doing extraordinary things because they have worked extraordinarily hard to accumulate the money they have.
So-
And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to, as recommended, close the following accounts. One hundred, two thirty-three seventy-nine, the Autopulse donations account. One hundred, two thirty-three eighty, the EMS donation supply fund account. One hundred, two thirty-three eighty-one, the EMS members fund. One hundred, two thirty-five thirty-one, the ambulance scribble trust fund. One hundred, two thirty-five thirty-two, the Loveland trust. One hundred, two thirty-five thirty-three, the Hartshorn trust. All of these accounts have no money in them.
I'll second it.
Can I continue to discuss for a minute, um, relating to the binding trusts?
I, these are-
Which is separate, that are different, yeah.
Yeah, it's different.
Yep.
These are-
Different.
This is a motion that relates to these six.
The other ones, I realized you didn't say that one. I just wanna point out that I do think what we're doing is extraordinary. I think that we have built a whole new EMS facility in the city of Platteville and I would like to see that there's some way, at, at the devil's advocate, this money was gifted to the city because they knew that the city was going to be the, the person that or the entity that can use best judgment about how it can have an impact in our community. And what the city has taken on with Southwest Health is huge. It's a really big deal for our community and our, our contractual payments help pay for the construction of a new EMS facility. So, I would argue that, that is an exceptional process that we are going through right now and we can word it different ways, but I don't know that if we were to hand that money over, if a, if a private entity from Dubuque took over our EMS, would we just give them the binding trust account?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because how would we trust what they're gonna do, that they'd make any good decision with that money either? So, I guess I'd put it on us as a community that we were entrusted with those funds to make sure we were doing something extraordinary for Platteville. You don't just give it to a different agency and let them make those decisions, I don't think.
So, that's, that's, yeah, we have a motion and a second. Which does not affect the binding trust or the reserve for the new ambulance, is that correct?
The donation supply fund, the members fund, the am- the scribble, the Loveland and the Hartshorn, six accounts.
It does not include one hundred, two thirty-five thirty-four.
Right.
It does not.
On the motion.
So, that's our, our motion and a second. We're gonna vote on that and then we can continue the discussion on the other remaining trusts. Killian? Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Nall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make another motion and this is to, as requested, rename and transfer the township payments for the building to the fire department. That would be account one hundred dash two thirty-three seventy-eight.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to transfer the amount to the to- to the fire department for the township payments. Any, uh, further comments on that motion?
Where's, that's the first one.
It's the first one.
First one.
The money, the monies that the township have paid toward a new ambulance facility would be transferred to the fire-
Two thousand two hundred five dollars.
Okay. Is there a second on the table for that?
Yep, yes, we have a motion and a second. Hearing no further comments, we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Nall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make another motion, that's to transfer, uh, to rename and transfer to the Public Works account number one hundred, two thirty-three eighty-two, the AED fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to transfer one hundred, two thirty-three eight-two to Public Works. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have another motion. I move we transfer to Southwest Health in accordance with Wisconsin State statute, Ambulance Act 102 funds held in account 100-23530.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to transfer 100-255, excuse me, 23530 ambulance act 102 funds to Southwest Health. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
That amount is $10,315.
$10,315.35 with...
$1,0426.51?
With $2,0371 in training expenses.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, yes, $10,315.35.
It will be a little bit less than that.
Leaving a balance of less than $6,543. Do you have an update on that, Brian, at all, or?
Exactly, it will be less than that $6,500.
Okay. We'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have one more motion. I move we transfer the binding trust to Southwest Health Foundation, not to Southwest Health, but to the foundation that supports Southwest Health.
Are they technically EMS service? Is the foundation technically EMS service, if that's the technicality we're working on here?
Well, it would be, it's like, the city is not technically an EMS service either.
Right, so why would we?
With the stipulations that the only use that the money can be put to would be for ambulance and services, as was proposed in the original binding text, EMT services, ambulances and emergencies in Platteville, Wisconsin.
I second that one.
We have a motion and a second to transfer that amount of money to the Southwest Health Center Foundation with the stipulation that is to be used for EMT services.
My wish is that it go toward a subsidy instead. So we're giving them $28,749, and we're going to, in addition, if this motion passes, pay him $100,000 subsidy in 2016.
$77,000, but yes.
Just a correction, yes, it's 77.
Well, that's township and city, and the city portion of it.
It's $100,000, but the city portion is not $100,000, so we should clarify that.
Toward capital investment as much as anything.
Well, it's going toward the EMS service.
Yep.
And the city has been given the money, and the city should use the money and not give it to the foundation. I don't think that's a good idea.
All right, everyone, I believe, has commented, we will vote. Killian?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
No.
Dan?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we need to take action at all on the account that's reserved for the new ambulance? It just said, "Hold and meet with the county."
Does it say?
I mean, does it, I mean, is that...
My recollection is that that is money that's, that there's going to be an ambulance committee meeting sometime next spring, and that's when that's going to be talked about.
So we don't need to do anything with that account?
I don't believe so, because it's understood that no action's going to be taken with respect to it until after the committee meets and makes a recommendation.
What committee?
Area Ambulance Committee.
Sorry.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay.
When I was at that meeting. All right, next item is information and discussion, municipal aid legislation. Erin?
Hi, good evening. This is truly an informational item. A quick, a quick update on some potential future legislation that we were alerted to by the Wisconsin League of Municipalities, and it has to do with the municipal services program, which provides state aid to communities that host significant state organizations such as UW-Platteville. And as you can tell from the documents I provided, that municipal, our municipal services payment has decreased substantially over the last 15 years, going from 82% of our gross adjusted entitlement to 42% and in the last year. So we think this bill could be important for our community, and we just wanted to give you a heads up that we intend to advocate for it and to ask our representatives and a senator to potentially sign on to the bill when it is introduced.
Any questions?
The municipal services included our fire, police, those kinds of things.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. We need a motion to go into closed session.
Okay. I move, I'll read it here in a minute. Um, sorry. Purs, Wisconsin statute 19.85 pren 1 pren E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. Dash, the library block project, 9, 8, 10, like 2015.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll have a five-minute break.